The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Mayor Brian, Board of Finance.
Peter Kelly, City Council.
Mike Lamoth, Board of Finance.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Greg Hahn, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Jake Carrier, Board of Finance.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposasou. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint board meeting from October 9th, 2018. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is our consent agenda. We have items 2A through N. I would just like to note before a motion is made that items 2B, D, E, F, and G are all products of our efficiency and integration of city services alone and with the Board of Education. Is there a motion to come before the joint board for the consent calendar?
Move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3 is to transfer $21,000 from the general fund contingency account to operating transfer out special revenue for the city match of the 2018 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant.
Move.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4 is to make additional appropriations totaling $42,000 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund for the 2018 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant.
So moved.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5, to transfer $225,000 from the general fund contingency account to operating transfer out debt service as of June 30th, 2018.
Move. Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6, to transfer $775,000 from the general fund contingency account to operating transfer out special revenue as of June 30th, 2018.
Move.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7, to make an additional appropriation of $775,000 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund funded by a transfer in from the general fund as of June 30th, 2018. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item, 8, is our monthly revenue and expense report presented by our Controller, Diane Waldron.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Not too much to report tonight. Just wanted to highlight just a couple of things. Our tax revenues are coming in in line with where they should be at this point in time. We'll see what happens after our January collections start coming in. Our building permit revenues and conveyance taxes right now are still, again, exceeding our budget expectations, which is good. And our investment earnings, again, are coming in better than anticipated when we were working on the budget. And we did actually increase that line item last year when we were working on the budget, anticipating interest rates would go up. And we've actually been able to take advantage of that. So right now, our investment earnings are at 60% of the budget for 2018-19. Nothing new to report at this time on state revenues, so that pretty much is good news, I guess. We have actually, as I had reported at the last meeting, we had anticipated about a $410,000 reduction in ECS that was from the Alliance Grant portion. So that, right now, we did receive confirmation of that, actually, this week as well. So that kind of held true with what we had anticipated. Nothing on expenditures to report at this time. And if anybody has any questions on the expenditures or revenues, I'll take those now. If not, just a couple of other things that I just wanted to touch on. Nothing? Okay. We did have our bond issue last month. We did really well considering that the market was very volatile. We ended up issuing our $22.5 million -- I can't read this here -- bonds went for an interest rate of 3.337. One of the things that I did report at the Board of Finance meeting last month, which I thought was interesting, is that the cover bid, which was the next lowest bid, was 3.549%. And the difference, because the market was so volatile, that actually was quite a bit of a spread in a competitive issue. If we had gone with a 3.549% interest rate, that would have been an additional $700,000 to the city. So I thought that was an interesting number to just share with you, that we did extremely well. The winning bid went to Bank of America Merrill Lynch, and we start repaying that after next year. The $7.9 million in taxable bonds went to PNC Capital Markets. That interest rate was 3.918%. The cover bid on that, the next lowest bid, was actually 4.226%. And again, just to give you a perspective on that, if we had received that, that would have been an additional $300,000. So I thought it was a good day. We did receive a number of bids, which was very indicative, again, of the city's strong credit rating. Any questions on the bond issue? Oh, and just, I know we were anticipating a budget increase in our debt service next year, and with this interest rate, we're actually, we're in the ballpark. It was a little bit higher than had anticipated, but pretty much in the ballpark of what we had thought we were expecting. Any other questions on the bond issue?
Through the chair. These are 20-year bonds, correct?
They were 20-year bonds, correct, yep. My office has already started the budget process, so we've been doing that, as well as finishing up the audit. The auditors have been here since the end of October, and we think this will be their last week here. And we're really working hard to try to get all of the field work completed before the end of the month, because we really want to get that report issued in the middle of December if we can. And with the budget process, we have been sitting down with the staff, just going through what we have done in the past. We're trying to streamline the process a little bit this year, so you might see some changes when that comes forward, and working on the schedule, which I anticipate will be about the same as in prior years. So other than that, if there are any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Forward to order for the youth committee?
So the question was, the Board of Finance is doing a special audit every year. They're choosing a different department. This year, they decided to do the Youth Services Department, and Bloom Shapiro is doing that as well, kind of in conjunction with our regular audit, but it's a different department, different division that is doing that, because they'll be looking at internal controls, they'll be looking at processes, computer security. They're doing an extensive review of the grants that this department oversees. So this year, that is their primary focus, is the Youth Services Department. They will be issuing their report probably about the same time that our regular audit is done, because I know they've been working kind of hand-in-hand, you know, with a lot of the testing. Right now, they've completed interviews with all of the department employees. I think, I know they've talked to my office, and I know they are doing testing right now. So they're looking at how the controls are working with all of the transactions in the department.
Jeff Ziploc?
It is Jeff Ziploc, yes, yep. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the joint board? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The City Council meeting will convene in five minutes. Ready to start our meeting, so if you could be seated. Councilman Madera should be joining us shortly. He's teaching tonight at Southern Connecticut State University. Okay. Good evening and welcome to the November City Council meeting. I'd like to ask everybody to stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance to start our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the City Council members please introduce themselves, starting on my far left?
It's me, Dave Mills, City Council, obviously District 3.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
Greg Hahn, District 1.
Peter Kelly, District 2.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zapposasou. The first item on our agenda is a moment of reflection, and I'd like to ask the members of the audience to join us. City Hall recently lost an employee, Mike Newton. I'd also like to reflect on the sacrifices of our veterans as we're coming off a very solemn Veterans Day celebration in Bristol, as well as the victims of all the recent shootings that have occurred since our last City Council meeting. Thank you. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meetings on October 9th, 2018, and special meetings on October 2nd, 2018, and October 18th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on any of the sets of minutes, clarifications, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tonight, for public participation, we have a couple of presentations. And before we call up our nonprofit spotlight of the night, United Way, I'd like to take this moment to make a special presentation, which is a couple months overdue. We have a community member with us tonight who has recently celebrated his 85th birthday, Paul DiAprile. And in honor of his 85th birthday, we have prepared a proclamation. For those of you who do not know, Mr. DiAprile has been an active member of the community and also on behalf of his neighborhood, which was a former flooding site before the Public Works project of the Frederick Street Bridge. In addition to that, he has served on the Wetlands Commission. He is a frequent visitor at Public Works Board meetings to keep an eye on everything that we're doing there. Also attends most City Council meetings, as well as police board meetings. So we wish that all citizens had that level of interest, activism, and concern about their community as Mr. DiAprile does. So we thought it would be appropriate to recognize him on this milestone birthday. The proclamation reads in part, "Whereas Paul DiAprile was born on September 14th, 1933, the middle child to Paul and Rose Cassinari DiAprile, who along with his brother Vito and sister Roseanne were raised on Broad Street in Forsville," Forsville where he's still a resident today. "He is a lifelong resident. He married his sweetheart, Joanne Bachmann, in November of 1953 at St. Matthew's Church in Forsville, where they have been members for over 65 years. And they were blessed with six children, Linda, Michael, Lori, Mary Ann, Janet, and Judy, with seven grandchildren and one great-grandchild." We've referenced his many civic contributions on behalf of his hometown, and also was a major contributor as a member of the Wetlands Commission to the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Central Connecticut Region. For the past 15 years, he and the old cranks, also rhine clocks at the American Clock and Watch Museum, has had his training as a tool and die maker established him as the ultimate handyman, along with being an outstanding citizen, husband, father, and grandfather. So therefore, I, Ellen Zapposasou, Mayor of the city of Bristol, do hereby commend and honor Paul for his devotion and service to our community and congratulate him on his 85th birthday, a couple months late, with wishes for continued health and happiness.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Paul.
Would you like to say anything, Mr. DiAprile?
Not really.[853.73][853.73](laughter)
Did we surprise you? Okay. So now I'd like to ask Donna Osatch, who is the President of the United Way of West Central Connecticut, to join us at the podium. She is the nonprofit showcase entity for the month of November. Welcome, Donna.
(inaudible) shorter than everyone else. 15 minutes. So thank you very much for this opportunity, everyone, tonight, to speak to you about the United Way of West Central Connecticut. My name is Donna Osatch. I'm President and CPO of our local United Way, and "local" is the key word here. Our United Way is distinct and separate from every other United Way. We serve the communities of Bristol, Burlington, Plainville, and Plymouth. We are governed by a local Board of Directors comprised of people who live and work in our four towns, and all the money we raise from our local campaign stays right here in our local community, unless you tell us otherwise. We fund, right now, we're funding 23 programs at 22 local nonprofit organizations. I'll highlight two quickly. We are funding the Cambridge Outreach Unit that the Boys and Girls Club funds, or I'm sorry. We are funding the Cambridge Park Outreach Unit that the Boys and Girls Club runs. We are funding the Emergency Assistance Program that the Salvation Army runs. I could go on and on about the nonprofit partners that we work with, but I'll just stop with that. We, United Way fights for the health, education, and financial stability of every person in West Central Connecticut, and our partners who we fund also do that. The unique thing about United Way is we are able to bring diverse partners together who work, maybe never would have worked together before, and uniquely bring them together so we are able to solve problems that no one organization can solve by itself. So sometimes we're the lead in those initiatives, like Kids in the Middle, and sometimes we're a partner at the table in those initiatives, like the recent Stock Our Shelters initiative that the city of Bristol spearheaded just a week ago, when an amazing outpouring of support from the Bristol community brought enough food, more than double the food that we normally collect for our typical Joy of Sharing Holiday Food Drive. We have a toy drive coming up in just a couple of weeks, as well as significant money to keep the St. Vincent de Paul homeless overnight, the overflow shelter open this winter. So as a cold week is coming upon us, that's really important. And I just want to thank all of you, as well as your staff here at the city of Bristol, as well as all the voters who came out to support that. I know I only have two minutes, so I'll stop with that. Any questions?
Excuse me, Donna. I have one. I don't know if you recognize me, but I serve on the School Readiness Council with you. Insofar as early childhood education, what does the United Way do insofar as funding and programs, et cetera?
Of course, I recognize you, Councilman Peter Kelly. So yes, I am the Chair of the Bristol School Readiness Council. We also, our United Way convenes the Bristol Early Childhood Alliance, and those two organizations work very, very closely together. And so we fund places like Bristol Preschool so they can offer a sliding fee scale to their families who may not be able to pay the fee that they need to. We've also, that diverse partnership I talked to you about, we bring so many diverse partners together, and we look at data to see how we can solve problems. So one quick example, we looked at data around maternal depression, and it's important that moms with new babies bond with those new babies. It's important to the health, the future health of those children. And we uncovered some interesting information. We ran a program through WIC, the Parent and Child Center at Bristol Hospital. We had such great outcomes that the state of Connecticut is using Bristol as a model and asking all the WIC offices to run the same program. Just one example.
Councilman Proleski.
Donna, you guys do a great job. Thank you for all you do. Are you planning to still do the tax preparation program you did? I know that's been a very popular program for a lot of the citizens, especially seniors.
Yeah, thank you for that, for asking about that. We are planning to run that, and in fact, we're looking for volunteers. So quickly, for people who don't know, the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program, or VIDA for short, is all volunteer-run. We run, we do taxes for individuals and families who earn less than $54,000 a year, so it's for low and middle-income families. And your taxes are done by IRS-trained volunteers who are taught and mentored and supported throughout the process. So families are able to save that tax preparation fee, as well as get all the money that is due coming back to them. And we are looking for volunteers. So audience behind me or on television, if you're interested in being a tax preparer, you get the training. And we also need screeners and readers as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
We do have some pictures up from the Stock Our Shelters event last week, which was really a great public-private partnership that we pulled together very quickly. And I think it's important for people to know that there were $0 expended in order to do this. It was really on the backs of the entities, the volunteers, and there's many of them. So if I could just take a minute, since it's a nice segue from what Donna was talking about, the registrars or voters were great and just embraced it, checked to make sure we were meeting all of the requirements. We had several Girl Scout troops who volunteered because they were already selling cookies at many of the polling places, and so they kind of kept an eye on the food. They were able to call us if they saw things overflowing, and they looked at the money jars as well. The West Bristol PTO and the Southside School PTO, some of these pictures are of actually their principal, Dave Huber, there on a day off, making sure everything was going well for their fifth-grade night, their bake sales. They were instrumental as well. Love of Learning Connecticut, which is a new nonprofit in Bristol, they offered to take a shift at a polling place that was unmanned as well. We had the BCHS Interact Club, and we had the Bristol Eastern High School Football Team volunteering, because we needed to call in reinforcements about at 10 o'clock when we realized that this was getting a little bigger than we thought. The United Way called in volunteers. The Democratic Town Committee, which was below the United Way headquarters, sent up extra people to help sort during the afternoon, as well as some children to help. I even made Councilman Peter Kelly drive a couple of loads down from Chippens Hill that day. Thank you. We won't tell your boss that you did that.
Oh, he knew it. He approved it.
And also, just to show just that synergy, our Historical Society, the Imagination Museum, and the American Clock and Watch Museum donated large donation containers for receptacles so that we could have secure ways of keeping money at some of our higher-volume polling places. So it was really a great volunteer effort on behalf of over a dozen organizations and groups. And, you know, I'm not sure if we'll do it every year, but definitely, the fact of the matter is that we have, our goals that were supplied to me by Donna's staff earlier this week, was we took in over $5,000 in cash, and we were able to give St. Vincent de Paul the amount that they needed, which was $3,697, in order to open their overflow shelter. The city of Bristol is contributing an additional $2,565 by reprogramming a CDBG grant that was returned to us by the Salvation Army, because they're going in a different direction with one of their programs. So just think about that as well, that another nonprofit is turning back money so that another nonprofit can benefit. Once that was dispersed, we had $1,300 to give to four other safety net agencies, and those disbursements, I think, are happening on Friday, to Meals for the Needy at Zion, Salvation Army, the Agape House, and Bryan's Angels. They're each going to receive $337 to help them over the course of the winter. So again, thank you for really being very fluid and dynamic and jumping on that, and I think overall, it was great for all of us.
It was amazing. It was a beautiful thing to see. So thank you.
Excuse me, Donna, was that your idea?
No, it was not my idea. Not at all. We just jumped in to help.
So I was actually going to mention this under employee recognition, but it would be appropriate now. We have Sarah Larson, who's a part-time employee in the Parks Department, who comes to Bristol Cares Meeting. It was actually her coming to me and discussing all of these needs that she'd heard at a Bristol Cares Meeting, and saying, "We should do something on Election Day." And she was augmented in great part by Lindsay Rivers, our employee in the Public Works Administration side. They organized everything, and actually, I forgot one person. The United States Post Office gave us all of those postal carriers to help as well. So again, those two ladies really deserve the bulk of the credit.
Agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go now to our regular public participation. We have two people that have signed up. The first is Ed Dudko from Lewis Road. And Ed, on behalf of the council, please accept our condolences on the loss of your mother.
Thank you. And, you know, I've been here dozens of times, probably hundreds in the last 20 years. So, you know, I've been asking for that plaque. I wanted that plaque before she died, and I said, "She isn't getting any younger." I mean, you know she deserves that plaque. I mean, if there's a plaque already over there at the southeast Bristol Business Park, whatever, on Middle Street, and, you know, most of that land was my family's land, you know, we didn't get rich on it exactly. I mean, you know who's going to get rich on it? I think these, like whoever owns pods, some limited liability corporation out of Michigan or something. I mean, that thing was just so wrong, you know? So basically, it's going to come down to, yeah, are we really going to be a city with a heart? And if there ain't no plaque, well, then you're going to be a heartless city. I mean, if the public knows we deserve this, my family deserves this, because who else has it happened to? Can anybody name whose house or property was taken by eminent domain? Okay, fine, if it's a school, a firehouse, a post office, something, but, I mean, come on, for pods, for something like that, hey, pods, that doesn't even create any jobs. You know, ironically, the day after she died, I was driving, and I saw a pod, and I'm thinking, that thing's going back to where we used to live. And they own the land now, or whatever. Like I said, are we going to be a city with a heart or a city without a heart? Want to be a city without a heart, then I'm going to just tell my story, because you know I'm good at the media. I mean, the eminent domain thing was in the New York Times, it's been in the Current, it's been on every television station, it's been everywhere. Maybe I could just pitch it to all those people, hey, I've been asking for this for a long time. They won't even give me this, and they portray themselves as all heart. I just want some movement on it. I really want, it would have been really nice if it was done, you know, so she could have seen it, at least maybe before her birthday, which she won't see her birthday.
Well, you and I did decide on the language, and it is very unfortunate, and I'm very sorry that she won't be here for that, but I do believe that that plaque will be there, maybe in time for her birthday.
Okay, that's good.
Okay. Thank you.
Been a long, yeah. I mean, she's 93 and 1/2, that's a good run. I don't think I'm making 93 and 1/2. You know, it's a good run, and most of it was good, except for what happened over there. And I know none of you had anything to do with that. You know, that's a previous administration, a previous time. But thank you. Thank you. Got a lot to do in the next few days. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last person for public participation is Debra Scher from Pilgrim Road.
Just one final thing, you know, when the death happens in the house, what do we call it, funeral home or police? My brother's just like, "Think the police." We call it police. Bristol Police were very nice. That's all.
Glad to hear that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Debbie Scher, 6, Pilgrim Road. I'm here tonight to promote and remind everyone about the 15th Annual Holiday Showcase of Stars Christmas Show. Holiday Showcase of Stars was started by a group of volunteers who wanted to have a fundraiser for the old St. Anthony's School. We did that for 12 years for St. Anthony's School, and then when that school closed, we turned our attention towards the remaining two grammar schools, being St. Joseph's and St. Matthew's. So in the 12 years that we did it for St. Anthony's, we raised about $75,000 for the school. We do this through ticket sales, ad sales in our program booklet. We sell water at intermission, but we give you free treats, homemade treats at intermission. And of course, it's a Christmas tradition now in the city. People no longer look at it as something that just benefits a Catholic school. It's something that benefits the community, because it does welcome in the holiday season. It starts early. It's December 1st this year, 7:00 at St. Paul Catholic High School, which St. Paul is a great partner with us. Cary DuPont has been like a guardian angel for us. Adult tickets are $12, children 12 and under are $5. And you can buy these tickets at the rectories, both rectories, St. Joseph's and St. Matthew's, at the schools, after all, masses at both of these churches, and Shannon's Jewelers. And we do sell them at the door. Every year, I do tell people, we get closer to a sellout, so take your chances, but we will have some available. And it's all local talent, and as you all know, Bristol is loaded with local talent. And you never know who shows up as a guest appearance every year, so sometimes you just have to watch. It might be a celebrity politician that comes on stage for us. No singing.
No singing.
No singing. So, and I do happen to have tickets with me tonight, if anyone would like one. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Is there anybody in the audience tonight that would like to address the City Council that did not have an opportunity or was unaware of the sign-up sheet? Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda, our announcements. And before we go into City Council announcements, if there are any, I would like to have our viewing audience know that we have announcements that are now being shown electronically, that will be shown within the Nutmeg TV production, as well as are on the board for anybody who is in
is interested in seeing them. But we also have two gentlemen with us tonight who have been in service to the city of Bristol, our Public Works Director, Walter Voselka, who is retiring after 15 years of service, and our Parks Director, Brian Wilson, who is leaving us to go to work for the state of Connecticut after 18 months of service. And so we, as a council, asked them to come tonight. We'd like to recognize them and thank them for their service to the city of Bristol. I would like to invite both of them to the podium if they'd like to say a few words. Hello.
Thanks for inviting me tonight. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, the mayor, the council, the Board of Park Commissioners, the staff here at City Hall, and the residents of Bristol have been fantastic. The opportunity that I'm taking, I kind of consider it to be a once-in-a-lifetime chance. So I went with it. But that's not without regret for leaving here after only 18 months. And I feel like we were really starting to hit a stride in a lot of things. And I'm hopeful to kind of be able to stay on in a part-time capacity through the transition period, so that I can help carry some of those things through and pass them off to the next person who comes in to take the helm at the Park and Rec Department. But it's been great. There's a lot of good things out there across the city, and it's been a real learning experience to see how everybody, especially you folks and the volunteers in the community, that make it what it is. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I've had to work for the city for the past 15 years. I do want to thank the mayors, the council, the Board of Finance, especially the Board of Public Works for the support and backing for things that we've done in the city. I want to thank the employees of the Public Works Department for all the good work that we've done over the last 15 years. And I appreciated the opportunity to work for the city. Thank you.
I think you've served for four administrations.
Actually, five.
Five. Nick Castro was the-
No, actually-
Kuchar.
Kuchar.
Kuchar was when you were hired. And, okay. Wow, that's amazing. Well, thank you so much for your service. I remember being on the City Council and being assigned to the Public Works Division and saying, "Oh, my gosh, the budget was unbelievable." And you spent a lot of time showing me what that budget meant. And I greatly appreciate all the detail that you put into that job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Yes.
Well, I'd just like to thank you. I'm probably the longest-serving here with anybody. And I just want to tell you how much I appreciate working with you. You're a true professional. Always attentive to anything that was asked of you. If there was a situation that needed to be worked on, you would get back to me and let me know the status of it. I think you've done a great job for the city, and I think you're certainly going to be missed. I know that any time that you're the head of an organization such as you are, there's going to be some situations that come up that are difficult to handle. And I think that you were always a professional in handling those situations. And I know that the city of Bristol has been very fortunate to have you as the leader of the Public Works Department. So thank you very much for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to any additional announcements that we need to make from the floor, starting with Councilman Maderas.
Sure. I just have a quick announcement. We're going to be celebrating the 125th anniversary of the Bristol Police Department. And I just wanted to share a couple highlights, I guess, the history of the Police Department. So back in 1877, a town meeting was held, and it was decided to employ night watchmen, two men in the South Village and one in the North due to an increase in burglaries. And then 16 years would pass from there, and the town would finally vote to establish a police department in the city. The first police chief was Howard G. Arms, and he served as sheriff before the department was created on November 20th, 1893. The first policeman, two night officers, and a Sunday patrolman were paid 25 cents an hour to do this job. So obviously, things have changed quite a bit. And we're going to be celebrating this anniversary this coming Saturday at the Policeman's Ball.
Thank you. Councilman Mills.
Yes, I'm going to give the sports report tonight, if I may. I've got a couple of announcements. The first is a breakfast that's going to be held on December 10th for the benefit of the Bristol Boys and Girls Club. It's going to be Dan Hurley, the coach of UConn. He's going to be interviewed by Adrian Wojciechowski. Tickets are $50. It's a breakfast from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m., and the whole idea is to retire the debt for the Bristol Boys Club. So that's one of the things they're going to do. My second announcement is the Bristol Sports Hall of Fame induction ceremony is this Friday. I hate to say, I'm happy to say that tickets are sold out. I'm sorry to say that there aren't any more available. But the people that are going to be honored are Carl Hall, Hal Kilby, Todd Ziogas, John Petke, Bill Sweet, Paul Neview, Maury Lovero, and someone down the end will add one Thursday, an additional person. And the last announcement is kind of a personal one. The Bristol Eastern Volleyball Team plays a semifinal game tomorrow night against Woodstock Academy, which is the number-one team in the division. So it'll be a very difficult game, a match, but we're confident that we'll come out on top. That's it.
Thank you.
Nothing, thank you.
None for me, thank you.
I'd like to read a portion of the proclamation that's in recognition of Small Business Saturday, which is November 24th. The government of Bristol, Connecticut celebrates our local small businesses and contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States, and they represent 99.7% of all business with employees in the United States. Bristol supports local businesses that create jobs, boost our economy, and preserve our communities. And advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And I mention this because as we approach the holiday season, I think it's important to mention every year that we need to support our local businesses. So please, when you're going for holiday shopping, please remember to shop locally first. And in particular, I know we're going to have a report a little later on the developments on Route 6 and where we are with that progress in the construction. So I'd also like to say, I know it's a little more difficult to get down some of those portions of Route 6, but if you're going to go holiday shopping, grocery shopping, go to a restaurant, or even to get a haircut, please don't, please think about those businesses there that are struggling a bit because of the lack of traffic and the construction going on in that area. I know they'd greatly appreciate it. So thank you.
I would like to acknowledge three people who are very active in the community. And I think everyone would be in agreement that our citizens are the backbone and fiber of our community. And the first person I'd like to acknowledge is Tamara Stafford Kirk. Tamara is a longtime teacher and coach at Bristol Central. As Councilman Mills mentioned, she is the other inductee into the Bristol Sports Hall of Fame on Friday. And I have a long, personal relationship with Tamara. She took care of our children in daycare back 20-plus years ago. And then my son Connor ended up running for her at Bristol Central, and he was the co-captain of the 210 state championship team, which is such a thrill as Mr. Mills can acknowledge. He, Mr. Mills coached his son in the state championship team, and we're hopeful his daughter is going to have that same pleasure of coaching her daughter to a state championship team. So obviously, a very rich culture insofar as sports is concerned. And Tamara's story is very interesting, because P.T., Pat Tomkill, a longtime coach and educator at Bristol Eastern, was Tamara's mentor. And Tamara has mentored so many student athletes. Now, she has a handful of former student athletes, not only teaching, but coaching in the Bristol school system, and some right alongside her at Bristol Central. So Tamara is obviously a great asset to our school system and community. And the fact that she's drawing these young people back to live and work here and mentor our children is pretty exceptional. The second person I'd like to mention is Jack Hines. And Jack, Jack and I also go way back. Jack, I consider a longtime mentor and friend. And Jack had a long, distinguished career in the banking industry, and his civic involvement and initiatives are really too numerous to name. Everyone, I think, knows of Jack. And Jack is currently a member of the Bristol Sports Hall of Fame, was recently inducted into the Hartford Public High School Athletic Hall School of Fame. And Councilman Mills, myself, Bob Callit, and Henry Cabot Lodge also attended that ceremony for Jack. The third person I think everyone here is probably aware of as well, and his name is Tony Cilio. Now, full disclosure, Tony is a relative. He's been active with veteran causes for many years. He's a former hometown hero, I believe, two years ago. And Tony served in the famed 10th Mountain Division. I don't know if everyone's aware of the 10th Mountain Division, but they were a division put together to be able to be on a par with German and Italian forces over in Europe. And they endured many hardships, which Tony, to this day, is still battles. But obviously, a member of the greatest generation, and Tony is the third pillar of our community that I'd like to mention tonight. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Tony's wife, Jenny, who, they've been married for over 70 years, and she makes the best eggplant parmigiana known to man. So, thank you.
Councilman Kelly, isn't there a reason that you wanted to mention, Mr. Cilio? Because I think you got lost in your story.
I'm sorry. I got excited about the eggplant parmigiana. The most important thing, and thank you, Mayor, is that he's going to be inducted into the Connecticut's Veteran Hall of Fame this December 7th at the Rotunda in the state capitol. And I believe, at least the mayor and I are going to be attending, perhaps other people. You're all welcome to attend if you're available. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Before we move on and turn our agenda over for consent calendar to our city clerk for calling, there are two housekeeping items that I'd like to do early in the meeting, so our viewing public is aware of transactional items. We have two late items to the agenda, and so thus, they need to have motions to be brought on to the agenda. So I'd like to ask that someone make the motion to move that an executive session be included on the agenda for the regular City Council meeting for November 13th to discuss the matter of Seth I. Dunn versus Detective Robert Motel et al., docket number 317CV01979 (JBA).
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second motion that needs to come before us is a motion for an executive session to be included on the agenda for the regular City Council meeting for November 13th, 2018, to discuss the matter of City of Bristol versus US Bank, HHB CV176035850S.
So moved.
Second. Discussion of the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
And just so everyone's aware, those will be added to our agenda and dealt with at the end of the meeting. Thank you. Turn the meeting over to our city clerk.
The next is the consent calendar, and there are six items. So if anybody would like to make a motion to waive the reading?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the next is the report, committee reports. So we start with the ordinance committee?
Thank you. Items 6A through 6D are recommended to the council by the ordinance committee. I'd like to ask that we waive the reading of each of the A through Ds, so we can, I'll tell you a little bit about the substance of them, but can we waive the reading of the ordinance as recommended, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion of the motion to waive the reading? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, 6A, again, from the ordinance committee, is to adopt changes to Section 2-140.2. And what it does is establishes a depreciation schedule for personal property. All of the, both A and B, if adopted, will become effective within 14 days of publication by our city clerk. But I'd like to ask for a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, item 6B amends the ordinances for the Commission on Aging. And what it does generally is it updates the ordinances to better reflect how the Commission on Aging and the, does its business, and provides certain authorities and responsibilities to the executive director. I'd like to move to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, 6C provides that a public hearing be scheduled on November 21st at 4:55 p.m. here at City Hall. It concerns itself with Section 21-141. We adopted a new ordinance earlier in the term, or maybe it was last term, where we did a, we made a procedure for accepting certain non-conforming city roadways. This addendum, this new addendum, was brought forth by work from the commission, the director of Public Works, our city engineers, and the police and fire departments. And what it does is modifies some of the rights of ways to make it more practical and applicable to what we are seeing in terms of applications.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Has there been any progress with paper streets?
Paper.
We still have our paper street issue.
Tamara?
All of them.
Since I gave the list of 96 streets, we've gone through and looked at it, and each one is different in their own way. The recommendation is to take it case-by-case.
Okay.
Approach at it, and that's about it. It hasn't been explored that much through the Real Estate Committee. We can, if you want, if you wish, we could take them up, each one.
Attorney Steeves, correct. They should be taken up on a case-by-case basis, and some of these are 100-year-old issues that are challenging.
That's correct. And unless a neighbor comes up, we could address it at that point. But again, we can bring it up to the committee.
I don't want to annubilate the issue of the unaccepted streets, but honestly, we have to resolve some of these paper streets. They are impacting neighborhoods. There's property issues. There's neighbor disputes. So I think at some point, if you could just keep it on your radar, and I know we've had discussions about it, and I don't mind the case-by-case basis, but we have to give some people a path as to whether it's through the Real Estate Committee, Public Works to come here, because I think some of these are starting to reach the boiling point.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, I'll add it on to the agenda for next week.
If, to the chair, if that's acceptable, we'll do, Attorney Steeves, we put it on the agenda for real estate, and then we'll do, maybe come up with a strategy.
That's fine.
And I know that you have one under consideration that's difficult, because it has public utilities. And I'm not talking about those. I'm talking about the ones from 100 years ago that maybe we can divide amongst neighbors, or we can just-
Right. You're not talking about the Jennings place.
No.
Yeah, that one's being resolved by the private party. That's my understanding of that one. The Real Estate Committee did take that one off.
Okay.
So 95 to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Your Honor, we have one more. Agenda item 6D provides for a public hearing to be scheduled November 21st, 2018, at 4:50 p.m. here at City Hall. And it concerns itself with Section 18-136, and expands the powers of the school building committees to include more than being able to hire architects. It expands the powers and planning function. I move to approve as presented.
So moved. Second.
Questions? I have one. Where are we with removing City Council representation on school building committees? Is that included, or is that going to be a separate item?
Separate item, Your Honor.
And when is that coming?
We have a meeting next week.
So it's still in process?
It's on the agenda.
Okay. Any other questions on 6D? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the real estate committee.
From the real estate committee, Your Honor, it's items, agenda items 6E through I. I have a couple of motions to read, and Councilman Mills is going to help as well. I hereby move that the City of Bristol accept the offer from Mark Ferraro in the amount of $6,000 for city-owned property known as Lot 4-4A on map 36 of the Bristol Assessor's Office. This property to be combined with Lot #222, Founders Drive, and lots 222-10 Brewster Road, and shall remain open space, except that the purchaser will be allowed to construct a shed on the property. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents, and I further move that the mayor, or acting mayor, be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
Just a comment. These are all landlocked areas, so that they're not available for access.
The purchasers are contiguous property, are.
I think the most important thing is we're wiping inventory off of our list and putting it back on the tax rolls. So I think this is a great effort. So I hope you continue to do that.
Thank you, Your Honor. 6F is a motion. I hereby move that...
Please vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I apologize. 6F is a motion. I hereby move that the City of Bristol accept the offer from Mark Ferraro in the amount of $2,500 for city-owned property known as Lot 222, Founders Drive, on map 25A of the Bristol Assessor's Office. This property to be combined with Lot 222-10 Brewster Road and Lot 4-4A Brewster Road, and shall remain open space, except that the purchaser will be allowed to construct a shed on the property. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. And I further move that the mayor, or acting mayor, be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And 6G. I hereby move that the City of Bristol accept the offer from Mark Ferraro in the amount of $3,500 for city-owned property known as Lot 222-10 Rear Brewster Road and on map 25A of the Bristol Assessor's Office. This property is to be combined with Lot #222, Founders Drive, and Lot 4-4A Brewster Road, and shall remain open space, except that the purchaser, purchaser shall be allowed to construct a shed on the property. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor, or acting mayor, be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
H. Okay. I hereby move the City of Bristol accept the offer from James Pryor in the amount of $1,000 for a portion of city-owned property known as Lot #75A-1 Pine Street on map 25A of the Bristol Assessor's Office. The dimensions to be determined by the city engineer. The purchaser, the purchaser, shall be responsible for any cleanup of the portion of the river bordering the property. I further, I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor, or acting mayor, be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
In the next item, I hereby move the city council, the City of Bristol approve the lease agreement by and between the City of Bristol, the landlord, and the Family Center, Inc., tenant, for a properly located at 296 Riverside Avenue, Bristol, Connecticut, for the term of one year commencing October 12th, 2018, through October 11th, 2019. The total rent paid by the tenant shall be $6,084 per year, or $507 per month, for each month beginning October 12th, 2018, through October 2019, which is based on a rental of 2,028 square feet at $3 per square foot. I further move that this matter be referred to the corporate council, Corporation Council to prepare and review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor, or acting mayor, be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same. And this is the property, this was the old Wonder Bread property that's being used as a storage area for the boys, for the Family Center.
Has been a second on the motion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to salary committee.
Yes, there are three items for the salary committee, Items 6J, K, and L. Item J, I'd like to move to approve an annual salary increase from $7,475 to $12,000 for the part-time Director of Emergency Management, effective with the beginning of the new grant year, and to refer to the Board of Finance for information purposes. And I do want to emphasize that this is all grant money. In other words, the entire salary here, no matter what it is, is paid from the grant money. So this is just allocating more of the grant to the director's salary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item K is also from the salary committee. I move to approve creation of a part-time, non-bargaining grant position of project associate in youth and community services to be paid in the salary range of $20 an hour to $22.50 an hour out of the Drug-Free Communities Grant, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes. Again, this position is paid for out of a grant under the Youth and Community Services Department.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6L. I move to approve the incorporation of language regarding accumulation of sick leave with retroactive application to January 1st, 2018, from the memorandum of agreement between the city and local 754, approved by city council on July 2nd, 2018, into Appendix A of the Personnel Policies and Procedures to apply to the police chief and the captains. Again, this is just applying a memorandum that we did earlier in the year to the unionized members of the police force. We are now adding the non-unionized members of the police force to the same memorandum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the mayor's opioid task force, and there's not much to report. We actually meet tomorrow night at the library. At our last meeting, we actually had a discussion about the City of Hartford raising the age of procuring and purchasing tobacco products to 21. And we have some of our opioid task force members doing some homework on that, and just kind of interested in the background of what brought Hartford to that discussion, what some of the obstacles were, and some of the challenges. Related to that is our continuing concern that many of our local stores are promoting and marketing to a younger audience. The jewel sales, the tobacco product sales, and all of those ancillary pieces that go along with that seem to be very dominant within sales areas of gas stations, convenience stores, et cetera. So there is some ongoing discussion about having some type of joint effort between the Youth and Community Services and their youth group, Best for Bristol, which is focusing on alcohol and tobacco use of young people, as well as our police department, and maybe going in and having conversations with the business owners, and maybe possibly doing what other communities are doing, which is staging purchasing with underage buyers to see exactly what happens there. So those conversations are ongoing, and we may have some policy issues to come back to the council in the near future. The next item is our Memorial Boulevard School Building Committee update.
Thank you. The Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Magnet School Building Committee meets every two weeks on Thursdays. The next scheduled meeting is this coming Thursday. The meetings are in the Board of Education Room 36 at 6:30, open to the general public. We invite the general public, as a matter of fact, for input. It's moving along very nicely, I think, now. The architects are becoming more engaged. They're, they've created a team with various responsibilities to match up with the plans to go to various city boards, and they've already started to engage with the zoning and public works, I believe. The hiring process for the construction manager is in full force progress. And the committee has assigned its members to various other committees throughout the community to be the liaison from that committee, building committee, to various boards within the city. So it's moving along. Like I said, and the next meeting is next Thursday. Thank you.
We're also building a Memorial Boulevard Building Committee website link off of the city's main page, and that's in process as well. It may not be live if anybody's looking for it, but it's, it's in progress. Other committee reports, starting on my far left.
None.
Yes, Your Honor, I have something from the Sustainable Connecticut program. Dave Oaks, an employee here, who's in charge of buildings and grounds, has done a great job in doing all kinds of background work on sustainable energy things and recycling, and tried to see what the city has been doing. And made out some, did some extensive, extensive work making out applications to the Sustainable Connecticut program. And we were awarded the bronze level, which is one of the highest levels you can get. I think it's the highest level that any city in the state received.
In the first round.
In the first round, right. So Dave is to be commended, and the City of Bristol is to be commended. They presented Dave with a plaque. We are, they also sent us a, an oak tree, I believe, or a maple tree, a tree, a plant. And obviously, the recognition, and this gives us a leg up and some grants that are being offered as well. So congratulations to Dave and to the city for, for doing this.
And I believe Dave is already working on getting us to the next level, which would be silver.
Silver, correct.
Which we were only short a few points.
Right.
So, thank you.
That's all I have.
Councilman Palesky, any other committee reports?
No, thank you.
None for me, Your Honor.
Yes, Your Honor. The City Arts and Culture Commission is a relatively new commission, and I thought it was a good time to bring you up to speed on, on what we've been doing. Just a few of the things that we've been involved in would be the farmers' markets, the Halloween trunk-or-treat, the pencil hunt, the holiday on the hill that's coming up in December. So what we're doing is we're becoming involved with events that are already taking place in, in, in the town, but we're enhancing them with arts, music, culture. And we're going to continue to do that, but we're also entertaining some larger projects, and you'll be hearing more about that soon. But it's a very active commission, so look for, look for updates. I would also like to ask Councilman Maderos, about a while ago, at the beginning of our term, we referred the future of Kern Park and deciding a purpose for Kern Park. And I've been asked recently about the status of where that is. And as Councilman Maderos is working with the parks, I'd ask you for an update.
Sure. Sure. So the Parks Commission and subcommittee of that commission, as well as the superintendent, have been having a lot of conversations with the Kern Park Association, which is a very active group that provides some stewardship to that area. One of the biggest things that has kind of come out is we're looking to do a strategic plan for the entire park system. The feeling is we don't want to do any major development or allocate maintenance resources to Kern Park or any facility without really figuring out how does that fit into the strategic plan of the whole system and what the needs are. So I imagine it's going to be part of that, figuring out what the priorities are moving forward. I do know that we're looking at doing an environmental review for the property. That way, when we are positioned to do something at the site, we'll have all the information needed to do that. So that's kind of where it stands at this point, as part of the strategic planning process that's going to be coming in the next year.
Very good. It's more of a thoughtful process than a quick, a quick hit, and that's what I think we're all hoping for, is the right, the right choices. So thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to touch on school readiness. And Donna, it's interesting that you referenced what I'm going to be speaking of as well, and it's how vigilant school readiness personnel are in recognizing trends with children and addressing problems. Because recently, personnel noticed that children weren't giving attention to books that they had in the past. So data was collected, and this is a shocker. It was found that parents were being more reliant on their electronic devices and not really reading to the children. So the School Readiness Council's working, along with the, with the library, and they're going to be addressing prenatal moms and dads, just stressing the importance of reading to your, to your children, stressing that the parents be comfortable with being their children, their unborn children's first teacher. And studies show that parents that read to their children in the womb, there's, there's a lot of positives that come from that, stress reduction being the first, and it actually helps children, once they're born, in recognizing sounds, and it makes reading easier for them. So it's nice to hear, Donna, that they are recognizing these trends and addressing them right away and working collaboratively with other agencies. So it's good to hear we're on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you.
You look amazed.
Just as thorough reports tonight, Councilman Kelly. Okay. Any other committee reports? Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. I did ask that this be placed on the agenda concerning Route 6, because we all are getting a lot of questions. It is a very complicated project that's already spanned a couple of years, and I thought that it would be important at a council meeting, as well as for all the council and audience members, to know the status. So the public works staff have been working closely with the State Department of Transportation staff on this reconstruction project. Collins Road to Farmington Town Line is what's in progress right now. The state contractor is Empire, and he's currently performing the following. There's topsoil and landscaping going on, curbing and sidewalks that include ADA ramps at the intersections, and traffic signal foundations and span poles. Next, the contractor is going to be preparing Route 6 project area for winter snow operations, which means that they're going to be installing temporary pavement and shimmying around some of the utility structures. The utility companies are scheduled to relocate a few utility poles in order to facilitate some more curb and sidewalk installations. And one of the major sources of delays has been the underground utilities that no one anticipated. And at this point, the contractor has completed the majority of the underground utility work established in the contract. However, the Eversource gas main is a major point of contention, and it may require to be completely relocated due to the depth, which is insufficient. So the Department of Transportation has requested a corrective action plan and relocation plan from Eversource. And I talked with Eversource today, and they are hoping to get that back to us within the next week or so. So unfortunately, we will be seeing this through the winter. We are going to continue with the construction sequence into the spring, and we will really hopefully keep this on schedule so that it wraps up before next winter. I will make copies of this. I think I sent it to the city council, and I would suggest that you keep it on hand in case you get questions. But that's where we stand right now, and we can update as we go forward on that. The other issue under unfinished business, since I have the floor, and then I'll turn it back over to all of you, is we just had an election last week, and with that, it means that the legislative session is upon us. It will start on January 9th in Hartford, and I am circulating to the council the recent CCM report on their legislative priorities, and I think that we, as a council, should review them and see if there's any areas that we want to look into. I've also circulated this, well, they'll probably get it tomorrow, it went in their mailboxes tonight, to all the department heads, because I'm also curious as to what those professional associations are looking at as challenges and concerns. So we have land use, housing, community development, we have transportation, taxes and finance, and a lot of things that are going to come down, including municipal labor relations, education. All of this is going to impact how we shape our local budget. So I'd like everybody to take an opportunity to read this, get back to me where you think areas of grave concern or interest are, and maybe we can have some presence in Hartford. This is a year where there's lots of bills introduced, as well as the budget work, so there's plenty of opportunities to, either through CCM or through professional associations with our, our key staff, have a voice in some of these policies at public hearings.
Excuse me, Mayor. If I may, I have somewhat of a statement and a question, I guess, relating to the legislature with the elections over. I think it would be wise if we made a concerted effort to reach across the aisle, because other municipal and national entities aren't doing a good job at that. And, you know, it's not serving the taxpayers...
doing a good job at that, and, you know, it's not serving the taxpayers well. So I think we should make an effort to set the standard and do what's right for the taxpayers and represent everyone. And, you know, I think you're in agreement with me, and I think you can steer the ship in the right direction regarding that.
I did send congratulatory notes to our legislative delegation last week, and Representative Betts would like to meet with myself and Mayor Merchant to discuss issues of concern for Plymouth and Bristol. So hopefully that will get scheduled sometime soon.
So we're going to be heading in that direction to reach across the aisle and work collaboratively with our Republican friends?
Yes, Dad. We will be working collaboratively.
That's good news.
Okay, moving on. Any other unfinished business by council members?
None.
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 Councilman Kelly.
I'm all done.
Okay. Moving on to new business. I've kept the update on shared services and regional initiatives on the agenda. Those of you who saw the joint board agenda, you'll see that some of the financial machinations concerning the reduction in positions, the merging of positions, is starting to show as the Controller's Office is working through last year's budget and moving into this year's budget. We're also in Plainville doing building inspection on a part-time basis, of which, for those services and hours we spend in Plainville, we are compensated. We have just received word that their halftime building inspector who is easing into retirement is actually going to be out on medical leave starting next week, and so we may see an uptick in those Plainville shared services hours. We are monitoring the Bristol service piece with the Plainville piece, and so far, it is not out of whack. We have extended the hours in the building department to a 40-hour work week from 37 and 1/2, and that seems to be helping them get their work done. So we will continue to monitor that situation, because this was an unexpected piece of our shared services agreement. In terms of regional initiatives, we have many, you know, boards that we go to, including the Nogatuck Valley Council of Governments, that have been really instrumental in helping with some of our regional issues, including transportation, especially bus transportation. We're still working through a proposal and are hoping to get in front of the DOT, I think the second week of December, about rerouting some of the fast-track buses. There's one that has a very small route that starts downtown and goes through Federal Hill and ends up back on downtown, and I'd like to reallocate that bus route to bring people down to the industrial park where all the jobs are. And so that is being costed out, and we expect to have a hearing, hopefully, mid-December on that. That's all I have on shared services, unless anybody has a question. Now the moment of the big reveal. We're moving on to the new street name, and I have a press release that was released this afternoon to the media, just to highlight the fact that we did have hundreds of names that were submitted. In September, we narrowed the list down to 10 names through the Bristol Development Authority Downtown Committee. The voting was promoted with a special video announcement. It was distributed to all of our social media channels and all the local media and websites, and people could vote for that final ballot in several different ways, because we tried to cut across all generations. We had an electronic ballot on bristolallheart.com. There were paper ballots that were available at community events, especially Mum Festival and the farmers' markets every Saturday. You could mail in a printed ballot with our newspaper partners, actually printed the ballot for free in the area newspapers, so people could cut that out and mail it in, which they did, or they could hand-deliver them to the mayor's office. So we feel strongly that we cut a wide swath across the community in terms of people's eligibility and interest in voting. So it is my pleasure to announce that the winning street name for Across the Street is Hope Street, and it's something that conveys a positive message for those who may be patients at the ambulatory care center, which is the anchor facility. It's also an acknowledgement that the city is turning the page in terms of the old downtown, the old urban renewal, and the new downtown. So I'm happy with the choice. I'm glad that it was the one that was chosen, as opposed to some of the other ones. I know that Councilman Proleski does not share my opinion on that. Democracy rules.
Democracy rules.
Yes. So we do have a street sign that will be erected in the spring when the hospital opens. Until then, the road will not be opened, so we will partner those two pieces together. So that is our big announcement for our new street name. And then the next item is charter revision. We had a successful charter revision component of the ballot last week, and we had seven, eight questions. So a couple of them are easy, and I've never done this before, so I'm looking for some guidance, but I do believe that some of these items require additional action. So I'll look to our Corporation Council and our city clerk for some guidance, but in terms of question three, which was the Board of Education in staggered terms, clearly, the city clerk and the registrar of voters will be aware of this, but does it make sense to send some type of advisory communication to our political parties so that they can plan accordingly? How do we do that?
We already do that.
Okay.
The clerk's office does that every year with municipal elections. So I send them a list of the offices to be filled, the terms of those offices, and then I also have to inform, of course, the Secretary of State's office. All of the changes that come out from charter revision go to the Secretary of State's office, so I send them those out in the next 30 days.
Great. The next one was explanatory text about the prohibition of workplace harassment, and so I think an appropriate motion for this one would be advisory to the Human Resources Department for Inclusion in the Handbook for Elected Officials and the Employee Handbook that gets handed out, and also to department heads for advisory statements when they do their board and commission trainings.
Motion. So move.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me, Your Honor. Can we go back to the, was it ever decided? I know the last charter revision, or a couple charter revisions, the terms for Board of Ed members, there were term limits, I believe. That was never rescinded, I believe. So how do the two intertwine?
The, how does what intertwine? The staggered terms?
Yes.
Well, I think that there is a lot of people that believe that the term limits specifically for Board of Education was not proper to begin with. So that's a whole question that I think the Corporation Council's office has been mulling over, and I think after this, I'm going to ask everybody's opinion about charter revision moving forward, and I think that that probably should be something that they continue to look at, because I think it's an issue.
Yeah, I mean, just one toner dicks the oven.
Right. Okay, so we, did we vote on that motion?
No.
Okay. So the motion that's on the floor was to refer to the handbooks and department heads for inclusion in orientation materials, as well as the handbooks.
Move it.
It was made and seconded, I believe. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to come back to question five, because that's the one that has the most moving pieces. So question six was, shall a personnel committee be established as an advisory review panel? And that passed. There's also other pieces that the title is going to be changed to Human Resources, which we will make changes to or in the process of filling that position, and then the director's qualifications were removed from the charter just to make it less unwieldy. So those are easy ones, but the one about establishing an advisory review panel, I am unsure about how many people is on that. Do we have latitude with that, and is that a city council vote just by motion of soliciting names? So referral to ordinance? So...
And, Mayor, I would include the fact that there may be things in our ordinances that need to be changed, just that language of human resources versus personnel. In other words, there may be simply ordinances that say that the personnel director is to do X, Y, and Z, and that simply needs to be changed to the words "human resources." Those will be technical changes, but there may be a number of ordinances that need to be addressed.
Okay, so in the matter of the advisory review panel composition and formation, we'll make that a motion as a referral to the ordinance committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on that. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I do believe Councilwoman Fortier's points are appropriate. We do have a lot of technical revisions. Do you believe that we need an official motion, or are you just going to be handling that as part of the charter revision process?
Move it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so moving on. The name of the meeting between the city council and the Board of Finance was approved to be changed. That, I believe, is simply a city clerk and controller matter, as is the bonding issues. To be clarified, that's a Controller's Office issue, I believe. So going back up to the last question, the sewer and water. There are many pieces to that, charter, ordinance, as well as operational. I've already met with the water department. I'm meeting with the division head of the Water Pollution Control next week. We have a meeting set up with the controller. I think we're going to need to have an attorney assigned to get us through this. There is no timeframe on this. It'd be nice to have some of the financial pieces in place for July 1st. I'm not sure we're going to get there, but we have enterprise funds, salary issues, budget presentation issues, lots of stuff. So that's ongoing. But right now, I see the major pieces being the Controller's Office, conversation between the two entities, Corporation Council's office, and the Human Resources Office. So we'll start moving on some of that. I don't think anything is necessary for a motion. So with that being said, they did a lot of work, and they were very fortunate that all of their questions passed, but there's more work to be done. So what is the appetite of the city council to continue and maybe impanel another charter revision commission early? There are two people who probably are unable to serve from last time's panel, based on job changes and other activities, but there may be interest on the seven remaining to continue, and I really thought that they all did a very good job. I thought maybe that would be the easiest way, is to query them to see if it's something they'd be interested in, and then backfill if necessary. Does anybody have any concerns or questions on that?
I think the sooner we get moving on that, the better.
Okay. Any dissension on moving forward with charter revision for 2019? Okay, so I will query the ones who served and see if they're still interested in doing so, and then we can move forward and get some issues from the department heads, as well as some of the unfinished business, and continue that way. And the last item is senior tax relief. We've had a lot of people ask us about tax relief. It is a topic of other communities, and I've met with Tom DiNoto in the assessor's office, and we've amassed what some of the other communities are doing. And I think that it's incumbent upon us, because we do run two programs currently. We have our elderly and totally disabled tax relief program, and I believe there's about 500 or so people that are on that. That's administered by the city assessment staff, and this costs us $350,000 annually. And then a few years ago, we implemented the, what do we call that, the senior volunteer?
Tax credit.
Tax credit, where those seniors who still own real property and who volunteer can record their hours between the assessor's office or the senior center and receive, I think it's $300 off of their taxes. And we capped that program locally for $24,000. And I did ask Tom how that was, because the first couple of years, it was pretty slow, and he said that they're close to getting to that point of the $24,000 cap. So because these other communities are starting to look at it, and with a new governor and with a new legislative session, I thought it would be interesting to look at some of these model ordinances, to look at our income levels. Maybe it's a simple matter of adjusting our tiers that we do in Bristol. But most importantly, the ordinance committee, which is where I'm going to refer this, I think we need to establish a baseline of how many qualifying seniors could possibly be in this pool. So Tom and I discussed some of that. He's also done a chart that I'm going to pass on to you, which talks about different scenarios if we do this, and where that shifts some of the tax burden, whether it's the commercial utility industrial sector, apartments, residential, others. So it's a lot. There's no timeframe on this, other than if we were to do something, it'd be nice to do it by the October 1st, 2019 grand list. So if someone would be so kind as to make a motion, because I can't, I'd like to refer the matter of senior tax relief for discussion by the ordinance committee.
I would move that we take the topic of senior tax relief and send it to the ordinance committee, and I'm very much in favor of this, Your Honor. I think that Bristol has a very high number of senior citizens, and many of whom want to stay in their homes as long as they possibly can, and if a small amount of assistance from those of us that are able to pay our full share of taxes, if we can help them do that, I think it makes a tremendous difference to their quality of life, and I think it's a very valuable service that we should be providing to them.
Agreed. Thank you.
Second.
Further discussion on the motion of senior tax relief. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do have one more referral. I'd like to refer the 23-1-B ordinance section concerning citation officers through code enforcement back to the ordinance committee. As we're filling vacancies in the Public Works Department, the Public Works Director Vaselka brought to my attention, because I wanted to give citation powers to everyone, but I can't, because there's a very specific category of employees that are given citation powers. So it's 23-1-B. I'd like to maybe just generalize that so that we have some discretion with people who are able to do citations. We have many city employees who are on the road for a good part of their day, and it would probably expedite a lot if they were able to, at that point, issue warnings, give citations, and start the process, as opposed to coming back into the office and putting it on a work order list or having somebody else do it. I got to keep this one.
Do you need a motion again?
I do.
I will make a motion to refer the matter of citation...
Chapter 23-1-B.
Chapter 22...
23. 23-1-B.
Excuse me. 23-1-B to the ordinance committee to perhaps broaden citation powers in the city.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do any other council members have new business? Hearing none. We'll move on to resignations.
There is only one resignation, Your Honor, and it's from Erica Coleman from the School Readiness Committee, or council, actually.
Is there a motion to accept, place on file, and send her a letter of thanks?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There are a few appointments tonight. The first one is to appoint Diane Ashworth as a citizen representative to the mayor's task force on AIDS. There is no term.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm going to bundle the next one. We have a motion for one, two, three, four ethics board members. The first one, well, there's four of them. Lisa Casey, Byron Pierce, Kenneth Zetarski, and Roger Chason II, all for three-year terms to March of 2021.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And, Your Honor, which councilperson is doing those, because they come from districts? So we've got, it's Councilman Fortier for Roger Chason, and then it would be a District Two councilperson for...
Councilman Proleski.
Okay, and then District One for Byron Pierce?
Yes. Councilman Kelly.
No, it's got to be one.
Han, sorry, Han. And I'm, it's, Lisa Casey is mine.
Yep.
Okay, we voted on that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to reappoint Robert Montgomery for a two-year term to November of 2020 as the city historian.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To appoint Greg Han to replace Dave Proleski as a four-month term for acting mayor to March of 2019.
Do you need a motion, Your Honor, or is that your...
I don't think so. Right, Theresa, I don't need a motion. School Readiness Council. To appoint Renetta Stokes to replace Lisa DeMato, resigned, an unexpired term to August of 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To appoint Jennifer St. John as a parent representative, a term to August of 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next set is for our South Side HVAC Upgrade Building Committee. The Board of Education nominee that came to us tonight is Karen Vibber, and the Board of Finance has forwarded the name of John Smith as their nominee.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Stafford School Roof Replacement Building Committee. The Board of Education has sent the name of Karen Hints, and the Board of Finance has sent the name of John Smith.
So moved.
Wait. I think it's Michael LaMoff, actually.
It is for Stafford School.
Stafford, right?
Yes.
Okay. My list is wrong. So let me rephrase that. Stafford School Roof Replacement, the Board of Education nominee is Karen Hints, and the Board of Finance nominee is Michael LaMoff.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have a department head reappointment tonight. Therese Pack for a four-year term as our Town and City Clerk and Registrar of Vital Statistics for a term to November of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then the subregistars of Vital Statistics that issue the burial and cremation permits when the town clerk's office is closed, they are nominated by the town clerk and they are approved by the city council. And it is Eric Renatos at O'Brien Funeral Home for a term to November 30th, 2022, and Ronald and Chris Duhame, both from Funk Funeral Home, term to November 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And back to you, Therese.
Okay. 11 is resolution regarding the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant with Federal Emergency Management Agency for $134,703 and a city match of $13,470. Then there is a resolution to read, Your Honor?
Who has the resolution?
I almost have the resolution. I do. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of an application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for an Assistance to Firefighters Grant for $134,703 with a city match of $13,470 is hereby approved, and that the mayor or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application/grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents. And be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the resolution. Hearing none. Roll call vote starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 The mayor votes yes. The resolution passes.
Next item is approval of amendment to host municipality fee agreement between Covanta Bristol Incorporated and City of Bristol to allow processing of regulated biomedical waste at the Covanta Bristol facility. And there is a motion to read, and I handed it out.
I have that. I move that the amendment one to host municipality fee agreement by the, and between the City of Bristol and Covanta Bristol. Be approved and the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute this agreement on behalf of the City of Bristol. I further move that this agreement be transmitted to the Board of Finance for its consideration and adoption.
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Covanta is actually changing one of their permits, and this is actually potentially in the next few fiscal years after they phase in and get their DEP approvals, could result in additional fees coming to the City of Bristol for our budget. Any further questions or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we added two executive sessions, and we have one, two, three, four on the agenda as listed. So...
Plus an add...
Plus an addenda. So very adstitious items tonight. Why don't you tell us what this means?
All right. First item 11, 13, excuse me. That is the matter of William Dodge, and that will be Attorney Lacy and myself. Number 14, the executive session to discuss an employment matter regarding the city's director of public works will be just myself. Number 15, the workers' compensation matter of Darlene Adams versus City of Bristol, that will be Attorney Eric Bartlett from McGann, Bartlett &amp; Brown, and myself. Sixteen, we have quite a few on 16. We'll have myself, my assistant corp councils, I'd like them all there, Attorney Lacy, Conlon, and Steg, comptroller Diane Waldron, and Roger Rousseau, our purchasing agent. Was there anyone else? And of course, Mr. Mike Goman from Goman in York. And I don't know if he's brought anyone with him. And he has an assistant will get the name for you, Madam Clerk. With respect to the addenda, item number one on the addenda, that would be the workers' compensation matter of Thomas White. That would be Attorney Eric Bartlett and myself. And the additional, the executive session having to do with Seth I. Dunn versus Detective Robert Motel et al., that will be Attorney Andrew Glass from Carstening Talberg PC and myself. The executive session, the other added executive session to discuss the matter of City of Bristol versus US Bank will be Attorney Lacy and myself.
So we have two outside council here tonight for three of the executive sessions?
Yes.
Can we take those first so that we can release them?
I think that would be...
Okay. And we'll probably do 10 main last because that will be the most lengthy one.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Okay. So we'll just reorder accordingly. Which one would you like to do first?
Okay. Let's, how about if we do number 13, William Dodge? I'm sorry. Wait a minute. That was Attorney Lacy. We're going to do 15, one with Attorney Bartlett, and the addenda number one with Attorney Bartlett and myself. We'll do those first.
Okay.
Then we'll do Attorney Glass. That would be the Seth Dunn versus Detective Robert Motel. And then I'll come back out and I'll bring in the other people as we need them. That's that.
All right. So do we have a motion to go into executive session? And for our viewing audience and those of you that are here, this will probably be relatively lengthy. So make your decisions about whether you're staying or not accordingly. Thank you.
Motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second.
[music]
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 Or Mayor, if you'll do that.
We'll have a motion to reconvene.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please let the record reflect that no votes were taken in executive session. We have motions that have come out of executive session, I believe.
We do, Your Honor. I have moved that the City Council consent to a full and final settlement in the matter of Darlene Adams versus City of Bristol claims NOS.w000838171, DOI 62413, w00590981, DOI 91112, and w000385397, DOI 11232010, and any and all other claims for the sum of $11,000, and that the Corporation Council, Dale Cliff, or Assistant Corporation Council execute any and all documents necessary to affect the purposes of this settlement.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions?
Your Honor, I have one. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter in a, into a unemployment separation agreement with Walter E. Vaselka, a city employee per the attached document, separation agreement, and release of all claims. And that the mayor, Ellen A. Zapo Sasu, or acting mayor be authorized to sign said separation agreement. I further move that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance and the Pension Board, or should be Retirement Board, probably, for any necessary action.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I have another motion, Your Honor. I move that the City Council consent to a full and final settlement in the matter of Seth I. Dunn versus Detective Robert Motel Motel et al., docket number 317, CV 01979, JBA, for the sum of $35,000, and that the Corporation Council, Wylondale Cliff, or Assistant Corporation Council execute any and all documents necessary to affect the purposes of this settlement.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Han?
Yes. I move that the City Council consent to a full and final settlement of all workers' compensations, claims that have been asserted by Thomas White versus the City of Bristol, PMA number w001280272, for the amount of $18,000, and that the Corporation Council, Wylondale Cliff, or Assistant Corporate Council, sign any and all necessary documents to affect this settlement.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Kelly, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do. I move that the City of Bristol entered to a settlement in the matter of William Dodge versus Officer Scott Verillo et al., docket number HHB-CV-16-6035336, in consideration of $20,000 to be paid by the city's insurance carrier. I further move that Houd and Lou Dorfes, counsel for the City of Bristol, be authorized by execution any necessary documents.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business to come before the City Council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
There was three seconds.
Thank you, everyone.[1752.72][1752.72][music]